From a patrolman to the senior sergeant currently. Sergeant Rogers was a member of the SWAT team as an operator and eventually promoted to the SWAT team leader. He was also a field training officer and he was involved with the Investigations Division as an on-call investigator as well. Sergeant Rogers also worked for many years as a firefighter with the Alamosa Fire Department. Ron knows better than most that law enforcement is a challenging career and it's a huge accomplishment to be able to serve our community for as long as he has. I also want to recognize Ron's family, his wife Tammy, daughters Kendra and Brittany, and his son Craig, who are in the audience tonight, I believe all of them are here, who have supported Ron and the Police Department throughout his career. So if you can come forward, at least stand up so we can recognize you. I'd appreciate that.
(laughing).
Thank you.[63.14][63.14](applause). So on behalf of the Alamosa Police Department, I'm gonna have Captain Mestes go ahead and take over from here.
It's great pleasure to honor Ron Rogers with this award, and I'll read what it says. It says, "Alamosa Police Sergeant Ronald Rogers, with great honor and recognition for your loyal and dedicated service to the people of the city of Alamosa, we the officers and supervisors of the Alamosa Police Department present this to you in recognition of many years of hard work and dedication. Congratulations on 30 years of commitment to the city of Alamosa, dated August, date of hire, August 8, 1988."[106.42][106.42](applause).
Sergeant Rogers, did you want to say a few words or anything? You're more than welcome to.
Okay.[135.19][135.19](laughing).
Okay. I see like I was gonna give you a speeding ticket as fast as you were getting away from that microphone.[140.56][140.56](laughing). Okay, counsel? Okay, well, thank you, thank you so very much for your service. Sorry, I was looking. Go ahead, Counsel Gregel.
Counsel, I mean, Officer Rogers, I want to thank you for what you have done. I remember when you come on force, and we both have grown old here serving this community. So, all the years that you have spent dedicated to our community, personally, I want to thank you, and this counsel wants to thank you also.
Counsel Carson?
I just want to say thank you. It's a pretty good stretch. Be safe.
I too would like to thank you for your service to our community, and more importantly, I would like to thank your family because I know that you all are part of our community by being a part of his family, and you all have made a difference as he's made a difference. So, thank you so very much. Okay. Alrighty. Counsel Behill? Nope? Alright, good deal. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Okay, up next, under ceremonial items, we have the introduction of the IT technician. Okay, Jim?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel. It's my proud honor to present Christian Batzer. He's just recently joined our IT team, been with us just a little over a month now. Came to us out of the Del Norte School District, spent five years working up there for the IT department up there at the schools, and he's now part of our team here. We're very happy to have him.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for being here. Hope you're all having a great evening tonight. I actually came from the IT department for Del Norte School District. The director there is Ken Graff. He actually used to work here a little while back, and I think he is probably the biggest reason why I'm here today, and I'm proud to be here.
Welcome aboard our team. Really glad to have you on there, and you're working with a great group of people.
Yes, I've noticed that over the past month. I really like working here, and it's much appreciated.
Good deal, good deal. Well, we wish you much success.
I may need it.[288.44][288.44](laughing).
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay.
Okay.
Up next, while you're still up there, we have the presentation of the Colorado Government Association of Information Technology, right? I'm assuming? Whoa![308.94][308.94](laughing). Man, that is a big trophy. Alright, tell us about that.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I have a letter here from the NOW's Chair of the Seagate Group that I'd like to read to you about our award here. Dear Mayor Coleman and City Councilors, please allow me to introduce the Colorado Government Association of Information Technology, Seagate, is a professional organization made up of information technology leaders, directors, CIOs, and other information technology professionals. The mission of our organization is to promote advances in information technology and to facilitate networking, collaboration, cooperation, and education among Colorado government IT leaders. Membership in Seagate is open to all cities, counties, and special districts in Colorado. It's my pleasure to announce that the city of Alamosa Information Technology Department has been awarded the 2018 Colorado Government Association of Information Technology Seagate Cup Award. The Seagate Cup Challenge is a competition held during each Seagate Fall Conference. The Seagate Cup Award recognizes creative and meaningful government technology efforts across Seagate member agencies. The cup competition requires that an in-person presentation be made by a representative of a member agency interested in competing. Winners are awarded the Traveling Seagate Cup to display at their organization for the following year. The winner of the cup gets to choose the competition topic for the following year's conference and facilitate the competition and transfer the cup to the subsequent winner. The cup lists each of the previous winners and topics. The list represents a significant cross-section of Colorado Seagate member organizations, both large and small. The topic of the 2018 Seagate Cup was Best Data Center Overhaul. Brendan Gallegos presented on behalf of the city of Alamosa's IT team, describing the outstanding work they've been doing in partnership with other agencies in the San Luis Valley. The Seagate members in attendance voted overwhelmingly to award the city for their efforts. Alamosa competed with Larmor County, Arapahoe County, Eagle County, and West Metro Fire Protection District in this year's competition. Please accept the congratulations of the Seagate Board of Directors and our members for winning this prestigious award.[485.53][485.53](applause). So, for the next year, we will have this on display here at City Hall. One of the things that is asked of the cup is that it's filled with something local. Louisville chose to fill our cup with dum-dums on top and smarties on the bottom.[508.74][508.74](laughing) So, I think they were trying to send a message, but thank you very much.
Awesome. Great job. You are really, really proud the way you represented our city. Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, you guys are an awesome team. I have really enjoyed seeing all of the growth, the partnership with Montevista, the things that you do on the broadband coalition, and the things that you bring to our community. And so, Christian, I'm really excited to see you've joined an awesome team, and Ken is a great leader from Del Norte, so you're gonna fit in very well here. But you guys did great getting this award, and I really am proud to have it in our City Hall, so thank you for doing that. You guys are doing great, great things.
Thank you. Counsel Carson?
Congratulations. That is a tough, tough hall, and you guys do great. I'm pretty impressed with what you guys do. I know the amount of pressure that your line of work is under, and you guys do not cease to impress me. Good job, and congratulations. Welcome.
Counsel Hensley?
All I can say is wow. This is pretty incredible. When you think about, one of the things about the three of you is that you're really behind the scenes, you're in that back room a lot, things like that, and there's so much, especially with where technology is now, and that you always keep us on that cutting edge, and you take care of us, and you make sure things are running smoothly, but you also do it in a way that a lot of people don't even realize it's happening because you do it so well. And so, I think this is awesome. This is a great surprise. I didn't know this was coming, and I just think it's very exciting, and you all deserve it. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counsel Gregel?
I too, Jim. Would like to thank you. I do remember when Nathan hired you, and had you known that we just had one big room and had this big ol', big ol' computer back there. I don't think you would even have come here. So, we've come a long ways in our IT, so thank you so much.
Counsel Brawls?
I just want to say congratulations. Great job. Thank you.
And I too would like to thank you all for the hard work that you put into that. I'm just so proud. It's something about trophies that make me smile (laughing), and I'm just really happy for the success that you have had.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Alright, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is Consent Calendar A. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second it.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so very much. Up next on our agenda, we have Regular Business. We have a presentation from an outside agency, Enterprise Opportunity Zone Review by Kevin Wilkins. Please come up to the podium and start your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Kevin Wilkins, 1201 State Avenue, Alamosa. Actually, I could give Director of San Luis Valley Development and Resource Group. Wanted to talk to you about a couple of zones, and I feel like I'm preaching to the choir because we work across so many committees, but I wanted a chance to kind of put it together in a formal presentation. First of all, about our state zone. The entire San Luis Valley is in a state enterprise zone, most of the San Luis Valley is in an enhanced enterprise zone. So far, this fiscal year, we have certified $143 million worth of investment for tax credits, and that's in the entire San Luis Valley, that comes back in the form of about $3.5 million worth of tax credits. In Alamosa County, there was $16 million worth of investment that was certified, resulting in a return back to the taxpayer of about $250,000. In the entire valley, we trained, according to the people who applied for their tax credits, 138 individuals, 110 of those were in Alamosa County. Sorry, I didn't break it down by city because I don't have a report down to that level. Here's where, I'm a little bit surprised looking at the numbers, the net employment gain in the San Luis Valley was about 132, and the net employment gain in Alamosa County was only 9.7. Now, keep in mind, this is only what people are applying for, so if they're not applying for the tax credits, it doesn't come across on this report. We are in the process right now of certifying locations. It's a two-part process to getting your tax credits. First of all, you certify the location that it is in the enterprise zone. I think last year, I validated 918 different locations for tax credits, and then, right after the first of the year, then we have to go in and certify the actual credits as they're taken. The other thing that's kind of exciting to talk to you about is a new federal designation called Opportunity Zones. Some of you have heard me talk about this a little bit before, give you a little bit of update where we're at on that. Montevista has done a promotional video here recently about their Opportunity Zone status. We had the opportunity to vet for the state of Colorado a number of census tracts. There was 12 qualified census tracts in the San Luis Valley. We were allowed to certify 25% of those census tracts for this new federal tax program. The federal tax program is a capital gains forgiveness program designed to put capital gains back into distressed areas. We didn't get 25% of our census tracts qualified. We got 50% of our census tracts qualified. We have one census tract in Rio Grande County, we have one census tract in Swatch County, one census tract in Costilla County, and because of the way the census tracts are gerrymandered in Alamosa County, there's three census tracts in Alamosa County in order to cover the entire city limits of Alamosa. Our next step after getting the Enterprise Zone designation, or the Opportunity Zone designation, will be to do an Opportunity Zone prospectus. I was just notified last week that the Department of Local Affairs is gonna give us matching funds up to $25,000 to contract out for an Opportunity Zone prospectus. We have our Opportunity Zone prospectus request for proposal prepared and distributed with a December 15 deadline to start that prospectus work on January 1st. Here's where my ask comes in. As we look at the downtown plan, as we look at what's going on in the valley, keep in mind investment-grade opportunities that we can fold into this Opportunity Zone plan. The Opportunity Zone is different than the other tax credits. It's not an upfront tax credit. Most of the benefits come as a result of a capital gain investment. The first part of the Opportunity Zone is if you have a capital gain in your portfolio, you can deploy it into an Opportunity Zone investment, and all capital gains are deferred for a period of seven years. During that seven-year period, about 15% of it is reduced, of that tax is reduced, by an increase in your basis. The big kicker is at the end of a 10-year holding period. If that investment increases in value and resulting in a capital gain after a 10-year holding period, all of those capital gains are forgiven. It is estimated there's $6.1 trillion worth of unrealized capital gains in the market that Colorado, I think, because they're going about this very strategically, has an opportunity to have deployed into the state of Colorado, and I want to make sure the San Luis Valley has their chance at it. Brief enough, Heather?
Okay. Good deal. We're gonna leave it open for some council members to make comments or ask questions, okay? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for that. So, what do you need from us? What is it that we can support? How do we support this?
As leaders in the community, you're out and about, you see a lot of things, you hear a lot of things. Christian, I know you're involved in technology, and you're part of the broadband committee. There may be an opportunity where we can deploy some infrastructure that, on the private sector, that has the opportunity for an appreciable gain. That's one example. If you go through your downtown master plan, there's a number of cool projects that are being vetted by that, it's not a comprehensive, it's a downtown plan. How simple. That could be an opportunity to garner outside investment to say, hey, let's do the courthouse. Let's do that residential thing down by the river, or, those are the two that are coming to mind, but you get the drift of...
So, really...
Anything that results in an investment game.
So, really, just promoting it and letting people know that they can talk to you about those, and saying that we have this opportunity in our community, and so this is why people should look at us to have these investments?
Once, what I hope, if I can find the right consultants, is we will take these ideas, and we'll figure out, okay, which is the most likely to drive outside investment, and we will run in a qualified investment modeling effort behind that, so that we can put it into an actual prospectus form and demonstrate that return on investment. Mr. Brawls, I'm sure is from his financial background, is experienced in, okay, what does an investment look like? What type of returns do we have to generate? And generally, for this, we're looking for something that's north of probably an 8 to 12% ROI.
And then, to add a little bit more information, so as this evolves, because we're kind of, you're still working, everyone's working on figuring this out and how to get the most out of it, and there may be continued community discussions and those types of things. So, in addition to being aware of it, connecting people, all of that, there may be additional discussions and brainstorming. But the other is when Kevin reached out to say, hey, let's talk about the Opportunity Zone of Council, I said, you know, that's a good opportunity to also remind everyone we still have the Enterprise Zone, because I'm not sure we remember that. When we look at economic development, we look at, do you offer incentives, do you not? You get into the more complicated stuff. I think we sometimes forget that we have this Enterprise Zone that's very well managed through DRG, and it's something where we upfront don't have to do incentives, and so it is from an economic development tool there, and I didn't want us to forget about it as well.
And that is something that the state is promoting, and I'm reminding local governments that this Opportunity Zone is not the end-all of, I mean, there still may be cases on an individual basis where there are but four conditions, where local governments will be asked to participate through additional, whatever your local incentive policy is, but we don't know that until we start looking at the investments.
Counsel Brawls?
I was gonna say, thank you for standing on top of that, and I think it'll pay a great dividend to the whole San Luis Valley over the next few years here, so thank you for your work on that.
They were pretty tough on us on making sure that we, and that's the reason I'm getting out and about, is I kind of fell on the sword with OEDIT to get us double the amount of zones that we should've, and I would hate to see them go unused.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing that with us and that helpful information, and I appreciate all the work that you and your team does for our community and the San Luis Valley.
And you'll get it all again in two weeks.
Oh, yes, I'll be there.[1254.33][1254.33](laughing) Okay, thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Business brought forward by city staff. First item is Public Works, the levy certification update.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, as you all know, we've been working on the levy certification for some time, and recently, we have begun the actual physical work. This started with the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the city of Alamosa jointly negotiating a scope of work for the Rio Grande River Levy Certification Assessment, and that work has started with Woods Engineering Group. The work will be performed in accordance with the FEMA Guidelines and Design Criteria. This will lead into the remapping of the FEMA, or republishing the FEMA map for Alamosa Back when the levee was rebuilt the last time, it was done by the Army Corps of Engineers, and at that time, large trees and tree roots were allowed in the levee structural section. Now, that design criteria has changed in both the Army Corps criteria and the FEMA criteria, where those large trees and large tree roots are not allowed in the levee cross-section. So, when we look at the levee, as we're walking on the trail, it shouldn't have large trees or large tree roots anywhere in that section. This assessment that has started will include design documents suitable for construction of the necessary improvements, and also an engineering cost estimate will be provided as part of this work effort. Woods Engineering is currently, I don't know if any of you have seen the drill rig that's going up and down the levee right now. It's a track-mounted drill rig. That's a consultant working for Woods Engineering is doing that drilling. That drilling creates the samples for the geotechnical analysis that will follow in in the laboratory. That drilling will be completed this Saturday, so they've been doing that for approximately two weeks, and will be done later this week. During the preliminary flood data analysis, Woods Engineering found that there were several large magnitude flood events that occurred in the valley in the 18890s. These events skew the statistical flood magnitude upward for the 100-year event in Alamosa. I just said a big mouthful, so I need to slow down for a second. So, what happened is there were big snowfall runoff events in the 1890s, and because of that, it skews the data for our 100-year design event here in Alamosa. Well, if you think back to what was in the valley in the 1890s, we didn't have a lot of the big irrigation systems built yet. So, as Woods Engineer called me, Chriside with Woods Engineering and I had a conversation, and we were saying, you know, we really shouldn't use those events because the geometry of the river system has changed. And so, those discussions continued on with the state Water Conservation Board personnel, and the state Water Conservation Board chose to expand Woods to another work product, which will be what's called a gauge analysis from the headwaters of the Rio Grande to the state line. So, this is much bigger scope of work than just looking at the Alamosa model, it's looking at the whole valley, Rio Grande model. And that will be accomplished concurrent with this work at no cost, additional cost to the city, but because of that, what will happen is those large events back in history will be taken, will be accounted for, and statistically moved out of the model, so the volume of water that will be analyzed for our model is likely to be smaller, is what we think will happen when the work is complete. Hasn't been done yet, but that's what all the engineers talking together think will happen when we get to the end. In spite of that, Woods Engineering is on board and on track to complete our assessment for our work on our levee by the end of June 2019. So, we're still on that same timeline. Last thing, and this is another mouthful. The FEMA Guidelines and Strategies, since the last map was generated, have changed from a one-dimensional model to a two-dimensional model. So, let me explain a little bit what that means. Is what we used to do when we modeled rivers, we cut it in cross-sections, and we would look at the velocities and the water level at this cross-section, and then we would calculate all that flow, and then we would take that flow and transport it to the next cross-section. It was an iterative process, that we'd go back and forth with this series of cross-sections until we got to within a fractional inch of the calculations. Now, because of improved technology, we can actually do that two-dimensional. So, instead of having a one-dimensional calculation going down the river, we can now calculate that in two dimensions, so we can allow the water to spread out and contract back in. And when we do that, and when we look at this reach in Alamosa, we have a very wide flood plain that constricts down to the US 160 Bridge, and that wide flood plain will spread out the water and also reduce the flood elevation. So, we are very likely to have a very favorable calculation when we get to the end of this process, that our levee is probably in pretty good shape, other than tree removals, and we may have some small segments that we have to rebuild. But things are looking good with this work effort, and I think if there's anything else I need to add, I will open it up to, do you have any questions of me on the levee work?
And Mayor, I just, I felt like as Mark was updating me and we're working on this, I thought, you know, it's been a while since I think we've really updated, Counsel. There's been some significant changes, there's been some good news. I think the last update was, you know, the state was gonna partner with us, but now we're starting to see activity, and I'm not sure we actually talked about, here's what you can expect to see. And so, I want to thank Mark for reviewing that information and then answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Mark. Counsel Gregel?
I had a couple, Mark. Today, do we have a certified levee out there?
Yes.
Because I remember at one time, the Corps of Engineers was thinking of pulling that certification, and because of the changes you talked about.
Yes. There's a process, and the way that we set up the scope of work, we will get to the point in the process where we have a plan to remediate the things that we, or correct the things that we need to correct, prior to doing what's called the LAMP Study, which the LAMP Study is actually generating a new map. At one time, the state wanted to do that first. We convinced, between Pat and I, we've convinced the state to do that last. So, now we have a chance to go through the process and maintain the certification of the levee.
And also, when you start, when they assign the work that needs to be done within the levee, are we gonna dredge that part of the river by the bridge? Because you could see the growth over the years, and we've been lucky that we've, maybe lucky is the wrong term, that we haven't had all this snow and all this runoff, because back in the 80s, that thing used to jump over the dike there. back in the 80s, that thing used to jump over, over the dike there, so.
That's a possibility, is that, is that the engineering study would come back, that we need to do dredging, but it's not a likelihood. That siltation that you see, that's occurred in the cattails and whatnot there by the bridge, as we get a major flood, the velocity of that water will move that on down the system. But that'll come out in the study, I don't know that until we get to that phase of the work.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Thank you, Heather, appreciate it. Okay, let's go to the next item.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
So I know this is a little bit out of the ordinary, but I think one of the items that we may have individuals in the audience for, may be further along in the agenda, the public hearing and motion authorizing the creation of a parking permit. If Council's okay, I'd like to recommend maybe we move that forward, and some of these other drier items can come, come after that, for anyone who might be in the audience for that one item, is that, I'd just like to put that out there.
How do you feel, Council? Feel good? All right, let's do that.
Okay, so if we jump to the public hearing and motion authorizing the creation of a parking permit system for a portion of El Sol, I am going to open up a few items here. Essentially, what I want to start with is, over the past year, we were contacted by property owners who live near Adam State University, and they were expressing concerns related to the parking patterns that were occurring, and depending on what block they lived on, usually dictated what kind of concerns they were having, if any, so I want to be clear, not necessarily every resident that lived in that area was having concerns. We also want to be clear that it's not something that is entirely just students, I think sometimes it is students, I think sometimes it could be staff, and sometimes it could be people just visiting the campus, and, and other things like that. So what's creating the parking situation can be a lot of different users. We also pointed out, when we had representatives from ASU at the public outreach, some of the steps that Adam State has taken throughout the years, as far as building new parking lots, and some things like that. I think the issue that's happened, though, is, it's amazing that the parking lots have been built, and they can handle some of the parking, but sometimes it's just easier to walk across the street than to park in some of those parking lots, and so that doesn't necessarily change the behavior of some of the individuals that are, that are doing that. So with that, and meeting with some of the residents, the city set out to just find out what the concerns were, if there was some consistency and consensus among the neighbors, and we wanted to talk about what some of the options might be, and quickly, one of the options we discussed was the parking permit system. We made it clear that there's pros and cons to the parking permit system, it can be a little bit of an inconvenience for those residents, it's not something that would cost anything, but it also could help alleviate some of the concerns that were out there. After holding two public meetings, the city then sent out a survey to all the residents, and so everyone had the opportunity to vote on if they wanted to have a parking permit system, or not have a parking permit system. We were pretty consistent in our messaging, that this is not something that the city wanted to force onto the neighborhood by any means, it was something that if this is what the neighborhood wanted, it was something staff would be willing to recommend to city council. What I'm putting up in front of you is a result of what that survey netted. What you will see is these red dots are those residents who responded to the survey and said, "No, we do not want a parking permit system." The green dots are those who responded and said, "Yes, we do want a parking permit system." We do have a few yellows, that's where the landlord replied one way, and the tenant replied the other way, and then you'll see, we just have some properties that, that didn't vote, and we don't know what that means. It could mean they don't care one way or another, it could mean they're against it, it could mean they're for it, they just, they did not submit a response. So when we took a look at this map, and I went back to what we started with, which is, this is not something the city's wanting to force onto the neighborhoods, it became clear that really the only area where there's somewhat consistency on wanting this, is along Monterey Avenue, and this little stretch of El Sol. Now, on Monterey, on the other side, it's already either no parking, or it has loading zones and stuff, we are not gonna mess with that side of the road. What we would do on the other side, is we would post signs that indicate it's permit parking only, and we would also paint the curbs. The reason we want to paint the curbs is, I think we've all been in a new community that we're not familiar with, and you park, and you may miss the one sign that says not to park there, but usually you notice the color of the curb. So that's why we want to do both of those, because we definitely don't want someone to be a parent visiting their child, or visiting the campus, and have a negative experience type of situation, so we do want to minimize that. So, the area we would be looking at, a parking permit system would be this blue hatched area. Now, you may wonder, for some of these, that either don't have a dot, like these on the northern end, those are owned by ASU, the red dot is owned by La Puente, this is a rental property, and we were not able to track down a number, so what I did is, if they didn't, if we didn't have a response, I tried to reach out to them via phone, and those types of things, so I was not able to track down number 82, and I was not able to track down number 98. So let me minimize this. When you talk about what a permit program might look like, what staff is proposing, and, and this is nothing that needs to be locked in stone, it's to get the conversation going, is that each record property owner would receive five parking permits, and they can use that for their own vehicles, they can use that for guests, if they have a handyman coming, if they have relatives visiting, or if there's five registered cars at that residence, they can, they can use it for, for those. The permits, if they do loan it out to, say, a handyman coming, they should collect that back when they're done with it, so they don't want to lose their, their permits. They should hang from the rearview mirror, the point of this is that the police are gonna be enforcing this, and, and we need to make sure that, that they are properly displaying that, and this is where you can see some of the cons of what a permit program can look like, and that's why we wanted to make sure this is something that the residents wanted, and not something that the city was pushing on them. I've already discussed that the curb would be painted a color, we will put up parking signs. Now, what we wanted to make sure we were clear with is, you can have a permit, and again, they won't have to pay for this, they can have a permit, but that doesn't mean they get a dedicated parking spot right in front of their house. It means if you have that permit, you can park anywhere in that, that permit requirement area, and, and so we wanted to make sure that people were not voting positively for this, thinking that it meant they could automatically park right in front of their, their house. Their chances are increased, but it doesn't necessarily make it a done deal. Again, we will be enforcing it, there are those times we realize that residents may be having a birthday party, or something like that, so if they want to come in and get a placard for that specific time that's narrow, we can issue those, and that can allow for some additional guests that the five parking permits would not allow. And then finally, if this is something that, that is received well, and seems to solve the issues, and some of the other blocks look at this and say, this is something we want to take a look at, we can extend this at any time. Our recommendation is that they kind of put a little bit of legwork, they talk to their neighbors, not an official petition like those where the clerk has to approve the wording, but get some signatures that show that they have a certain percentage on that block, that they would want to do that. We wouldn't want to do it just in front of houses, it would need to be block by block if we were gonna recommend expanding this parking. And with that, I believe, I wanted to point out, it does not require a public hearing, but we also wanted to make sure that people felt like they could speak in favor, or against it, or offer any thoughts that they wanted to counsel. We did have two individuals who were not gonna be able to make it tonight, that lived on this specific block for this recommendation, and they had sent in communication in support of it, and I believe one sent some pictures as well, in regards to kind of what's prompting her support.
Okay, thank you, Heather. So at this time, I will open it up for a public hearing, if there's anyone who has any comments that they would like to say about this, please come up to the podium and voice your comments.
I'm speaking into microphones. Can I just use this?
Sure.
Okay, I live on Monterey, at 76. On either side of us, we have La Puente, and the other is Adam State, owned by Adam State. If I read the graph right, I believe it said that Adam State voted against it, the parking permit system, and when we had been to meetings before, they had said, "We will do everything we can," and to help, you know, and support, and, and maybe get this implemented, you know, to help. And now they're voting against it. And every morning, when I back out of my driveway to go to work, my husband has to guide me out, because I can't see, you know, in either direction, and so that makes it really hard. Another thing, let's see, I wanted to bring up, was that, here not too long ago, we had some people at our house, and my husband had gone to the store, and in front of our house, and all the way down the block, everybody that had parked on our side of the street had parking permits. We know there's, there're students, we know they're faculty, because we've seen the faculty members that are in the housing, or whatever, they've, we've seen them walk, you know, across, so we know, and it happens all the time. There was something else I was gonna mention on that, and I just can't think of it, but we're highly in favor of the, having the permit system, I think that would be a great help in that area. I can't think of the other thing that I wanted to bring up, but now that I'm getting comfortable, I, I can't think of it. So, but we, we really would like that to happen.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, please come up. If you can state your name, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Carol Redding, and I'm here on behalf of myself and also one other person. I'm here on behalf of Cynthia Tanaka, who cannot make it today, and she's been a person who has really been an advocate of this. She lives on Monterey, on the corner of Monterey and El Sol, and she's had a lot of problems, you know, with the parking there, and she's the one who's talked with Heather about that. So she couldn't make it, and she said if you had any questions, that I would be glad to answer for, so that's the first one. I live around the corner from Cynthia, I live on 89 Sierra Avenue, and if you look at that, I don't know if Heather could point it out, it's right, two down, that's mine, that's 89 Sierra. I voted for the parking permits, and my neighbors north also did. South of me is a neighbor who voted against it, and she has since moved, so I believe that at some point in the future, that there may be two more people, at least two more people on our street that would be in favor of it. So the reason I'm standing here is, I know that you're not thinking about doing Sierra right by where I live, but I really liked on your paperwork here, that you did say that it could be addressed at a different time if we're interested, so I just wanted to, to state that, I appreciate that, and, you know, that would be something that, we'll see how it works out. I guess my concern is, if, if there's parking permits on Monterey, they're gonna move over to our street, and we have had a lot of problems on our street, too, but apparently we just didn't get quite the, the support, so that is something that I appreciate, that you'll leave that open.
Thank you so very much. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments on this issue? Um, real quick, please, yes, please.
There's been times that the college students have parked, they've, they've actually blocked our driveway, and so, not just parking by the curb, but in, actually, from our driveway. And a few years ago, my husband was still working, he had his work truck, and he had backed out, he was backing out to go to work, while he didn't see the vehicle, and he got the ticket for improper backing, even though the, the car was there, you know, and so, but they still, they continue to do that, they are always blocking the driveway, we can't even get out sometimes, and they have permits to go to these parking lots, and they're just not doing it, so.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Thank you, really appreciate it. Normally, we don't allow this, but only because it's two of you right now, as that you make it free.
One thing I forgot to mention is that I've had neighbors and friends that were interested in selling their house because of this situation, and they were told by the realtors that they were having a problem, that people did not want to buy their houses because there was not enough parking. So you have a situation there where, you know, some of us are, like, wanting to leave the neighborhood, but we're having situations like that, so that might alleviate that problem also.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I don't see that we have anyone else in the audience that have any more comments, if we do, come up. We don't, so I will now close the hearing, the public hearing, and bring it back to Council. Okay, Council V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just want to thank Heather and staff for working on this in chief. I was approached by Mrs. Tanaka back in like January or February, with the concerns about the parking in her neighborhood, and on her block, I forwarded that to Heather, she got it to Chief, and then, as she mentioned, they had many outreach meetings, neighborhood meetings, the survey, so they've done a lot of homework on this, and I officially am coming forward like this. The I2 was what they call a student, and I parked many times here on this block, and I could tell you that, and you can see this in some of the, the comments that people wrote, was that people will park inches away from each other, just to get into a spot, they'll park in people's driveways, so that the folks can't leave their driveway, they'll park within the yellow, you know, it's really bad. So I think we gotta do something here. Something that I would like to point out, though, is, I also used to work for Sadexo, Sadexo is the cafeteria, the people who run the cafeteria at Adam State, and I do know that a few people who work there, park on the southern end of Monterey Avenue, and there are, there are a few older folks who work there, I would, I would hate to make them have to park along the way, just to get to work. And then, a concern I have is, if we, if we pass this, make, and make this a permit only area to park, are we gonna push the parking problems into Sierra, El Camino, and El Rio? And if you, I like that we do have language in there to fix it, but I just, I just want to point that, point that out, that that could be a problem in the future. And then one, one more thing, and I'll, I'll be quiet, is, you think maybe we could, something else to consider would be, school only runs from August to May, and the amount of parking that would be on that street would go down in the summertime, maybe something to think about? I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Council V. Hill. Council Gregor, then Council Daniel.
I, I was gonna ask the same question that, that Council V. asked about the employees, you said Adam State is on the other side, would they, would they be able to get some of these permits, or is it just strictly residential?
This is strictly residential, I think, I think the purpose is that there is parking available, people just are not maybe wanting to walk that distance when there's something that's right across the street, so this would purely be given to, the permits would be given to each residence, the, on record.
So there is parking available for the employees that Mr. V Hill talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Council Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, so when I first heard about this, I talked to the people that I know that live in those areas and I'm really excited that we did the outreach, um, because the people that I talked to are the ones that are red. Um, and so, uh, I, I really appreciate that we have this data because it's changed my mind. Um, and so I, I am in support of doing this on Monterey and El Sol. And I wasn't when we first started because I had only heard from the people who were not for it. Um, so I really appreciate the work that the team has done and I appreciate the public comments that have, have come forward. Um, and I also appreciate that you let us see all of the comments from all of the residents. Um, that was very helpful when I was reading and, and making, you know, and thinking about this. Um, what color will we paint the curbs?
I have a tendency to want to do fun. We get to do green? I was thinking it was going to have to be yellow and I was so sad, but we get to do green, which is even more, that's really exciting. It doesn't take much apparently to get me excited.
Whatever works, Heather. I'm no judge on that. Um, the other thing is I just wanted to, because I thought that I heard something different than our community member heard. I, I thought Adam State didn't vote, not that they voted against it.
I would need to check on what the red dot is. That's on the Adam State University property. There is that, that red dot. Um, I'm not the one that received the surveys and put them onto the map, but that does give me the impression. I don't know who, if it did come from ASU, who filled it out. Um, I'm not sure who it got mailed to or, you know what I mean? But there is a red dot indicating a issue. I can look further into that if you want.
No, I just didn't hear that and I know they'd been really supportive, so I was surprised and I, I just didn't hear you say that and then I heard the community member, so I just wanted to make sure.
Um, and, and I do want to, so the, the, both meetings, um, ASU had representatives and, and they, they communicated, um, you know, some of the struggles that they have. They were able to provide, um, very accurate information as far as what employees can get, what students are provided and, and those, and how much it costs and those types of things. Um, and then they also communicated wanting to work with us. It's been a long time since then, um, so I'm not sure if they said, yes, we'll work with you on a parking permit system, but they definitely said they wanted to work with us on the parking issue. Um, but it's been a long time and I wouldn't put my memory over someone else who was in the room either. But they, they were very positive in the meetings as far as realizing there is an impact. There, there's a long history of these discussions.
Um, I too have heard from some of the residents in that area and, um, a couple of the concerns. Um, one was the ones who were concerned about the people moving off of that block and going to the other block. And the other one, uh, other concern, uh, was the speed in which some of the students drive and the people who live in that area, not just students, but drive up and down that street to where down the road, maybe we should put some type of flash and slow down because, um, traffic goes fast down there. But the one thing I'm really glad that we're not doing is not, I'm glad that we're not forcing this on people who don't really want it. It looks like we have the majority, um, in making this decision. That is why it's so important that when council and staff reach out to the community for community feedback and for their response, it's so important that the residents respond because that's how we are able to make logical decisions. So I want to commend staff for doing their due diligence and reaching out to the community to get that feedback and not putting us in a situation to where we're forcing something on people. Okay, we have Council V Hill as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just some more, just some more information, um, I want to give, uh, kudos to Adam State for improving their parking situation as well. Uh, just east of the, uh, McDaniel Hall, they have that new parking lot there where there are plenty of spaces there. Uh, in the, in the parking lot behind the sub, the student union building, there is parking there. It's kind of tight, but if, if you can get a spot, you got a spot. And then they have parking over there by the soccer fields too. So there's enough parking for the students. Um, my sister is a student there and I just, uh, talked to her. She said that, uh, parking permits are twenty dollars, so I think it's very reasonable. Um, and frankly, these people have been, have been affected by this for, I think Charlie said one time, twenty to thirty years. And it, I think it's time that we, that we help these folks out. So I will be voting in favor of this tonight.
Thank, thank you, Council V Hill. And then just one other comment is that, um, I'm glad that staff has put measures in place to where people like I believe Carol mentioned that lives on the other street, to where if it becomes a problem, then the people on those streets can come back to, uh, staff and then bring that, those issues back to council if we have to expand it.
And, you know, and it was an interesting discussion when we met with the neighborhood because I, I owned up to being guilty. There's times when I have meetings there at the sub and either I didn't get a guest pass or, or something, but I'm usually parking. I don't even try to park on Monterey Avenue, but it usually is Sierra or sometimes even El Camino. And so I do think this fear that it could push them over is, is real. Um, but that's why we wanted to make sure if, if the neighborhood determines a different opinion at that time that they would like to do this, we are more than happy to bring that before council and expand it. But I also think the nature of pedestrian activity, it's only going to push it so far before it's easier for them to start parking in the parking lots. Um, but I really do think for Sierra Avenue, there's a very realistic chance that, that this might happen. And so, um, from a staff perspective, we're willing to work with the residents to do more information and all that, but it, it may take late work for them to do the talking. I think for Ms. Tanaka, that's probably what paid off some for Monterey Avenue because I know she was out there knocking on doors. So, um, it, it could be after this happens, we see a change of heart for Sierra Avenue. But until then, we want it to be driven by the, the neighborhood, not, not by us thinking we know what might happen.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Council Daniel.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot earlier. I wanted to ask about the enforcement. So we talked about the police, um, and kind of them giving out the permits and, and doing that. What kind of workload and have we looked at that and does it seem, obviously you wouldn't propose it if it didn't seem reasonable, but can you just explain that to us?
And I'm glad you asked because there is something I, I neglected to point out. If we do this, we also want to partner with ASU on is there items we can get out to students, you know, when they're coming to campus each semester, those that might be new of, remember there's restricted parking here. Because we don't want the students getting tickets either. And so we want to be a good partner of ASU and how can we provide information to the students and the employees and, and those types of things. So we'd want to do that as a preventative, um, step as well. In regards to enforcement, I think at the beginning, there could be a bit of a blip in regards to we're going to have to be out there more. But, um, when Chief Oaks was talking to the residents, I mean, they're out there a lot and, and he would talk about that. And so hopefully, we feel like this could lower it. And it's easy just to drive by and look and see if there's a, a placard or the, 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 the permit. Um, it's going to be a lot easier to know if people are should, going to, supposed to be there or not compared to the amount of times we're getting people towed or doing tickets or those types of things.
Thank you. And Council V Hill?
Yeah, one quick question. If this were to pass and go through, would we start this like in, for the spring semester in January?
Um, I, I think for the residents, we'd like to try to get it out there as soon as we can, but we would also want to make sure we're communicating with ASU and, and all of that kind of stuff as well. We probably, our, what we put in the council communication is, we didn't want to order the paint. We didn't want to order the signs. We didn't want to order any of that unless we knew this is what council wanted. So we'll take a little bit of time for those materials to come in and be installed. So it may be February first, but we could start the communication now that this is coming and, and those types of things to help transition it.
Thank you.
Council Gregor?
Uh, one more comment. Long enforcement, is there going to be like a period of time where, uh, to allow people to accept this or to know what's going on out there instead of us starting to issue tickets right away?
I mean, it's, it's a yes and no. I mean, because we, we don't want people to think we're not serious because then that's, they're going to get that in their mind. And we need to make sure that, you know, Kenny and his chief and his crew may decide to do warnings in the beginning, but you could start seeing repeat offenders and it's hard to keep track of that and, and that kind of stuff. So we may not jump immediately to just tickets, but we're not going to let there be, because
Sure.
people won't adjust their behavior unless they know that this is serious.
The reason I bring that up is, is like, uh, Mr. V Hill said that they've been doing this for years and years, so. And if people get at least a, a warning saying, hey, look, this is green now, you know, there's a purpose for this. So now we're going to start enforcing it. So I, I would think that, uh, that we should give some kind of probationary period, you know, a period of time so they could accept this and the change and stuff. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, council. What are your wishes? Council Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I move that we authorize the creation of a parking permit system for a portion of El Sol Avenue and Monterey Avenue that was outlined in the maps that we received.
Okay, Council Brawls?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, please start voting.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that brings us back to, um, Public Works, uh, item number B. First reading of ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is designed to do what the campus zone was designed to do, uh, in general, in specific with manufactured homes. So you may recall, we dealt with manufactured homes through the UDC. We had a moratorium for a while to figure out what we wanted to do with manufactured homes. And the UDC as, um, enacted only allows manufactured homes in manufactured home parks or in manufactured home subdivisions, which we don't have any of yet. Um, it, we didn't really consider whether campus zones might be appropriate for manufactured homes. And the, the purpose of a campus zone is to give owners of a, a campus, and it's required to be twenty acres, to designate a campus zone, to give owners of a campus more self-determination rights in terms of what their campus looks like. So they've got enough property that they can do appropriate buffering and design. And that what this ordinance does is allows campus owners to control really what they want to do with respect to manufactured homes, whether they want them or not. This came to light because, uh, Gingerbread House wanted to place another manufactured home on their proper, uh, not on their property, it's actually on Adam State property. It's on a campus zone. It's owned by Adam State, but Gingerbread owns the home itself, which is why they like to use a manufactured home. And Adam State came to our building department and asked whether we could inspect that for them and we, and we didn't realize it was a manufactured home and we were going to work out an IGA to give them a building inspection. And then Harry said, whoa, it's a manufactured home. I can't, I'm not certified to inspect manufactured homes. And we said, whoa, it's a manufactured home. They can't have that there. So that brings this, um, to you for your consideration.
Thank you. Eric, Council Carson?
Mayor, um, I make the motion that we approve ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty-eighteen on first reading and set it for public hearing on December fifth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion. Council Daniel?
Oh, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up next, um, we have item C. It's going to be up to you again.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, um, this is, uh, a, a project that is on the CIP. It's at the Alamosa wastewater treatment plant. That's for the HVAC system. Uh, the wa, Alamosa wastewater treatment plant, heating and cooling and ventilation systems are failing. The HVACs, C systems consist of three rooftop units and five boilers. The rooftop AC units are in very poor condition, is, condition, especially the unit above the UV, um, uh, treatment area, which has failed. The rooftop HVAC set unit over the headworks is also in, it's functioning currently, but is on its last legs. The third unit over the office and lab is in fairly good shape and we are not proposing at this time to replace it. In addition, the plant boilers are, um, they, they require maintenance or repair usually at the frequency of twice a year. And, uh, they are, they are operating at reduced efficiency right now. The budget for this project is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That budget was envisioned only replacing the rooftop units. When we started the investigation for this project and hired the engineer, we determined that the boilers are also need in, in, in need of replacement. Don't know why I'm stuttering here. Low bid for this project was received at two hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. We proposed to make up the rest of the hundred and fifty thousand dollar present budget, so the deficit, from the wa, the wastewater treatment plant outfall relocation project, which came in under budget, as you recall. It was originally budgeted for five hundred thousand dollars. We added three hundred and fifty thousand dollars when the state added a requirement to extend the line to the river. And then the bids came in under five hundred thousand and we have that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, that, uh, is available or could be available. This project would extend the life of the wastewater pre-treatment plant HVAC systems for ten to twenty years. Uh, the project would increase the efficiency and reduce the operating costs of the HVAC system at the wastewater treatment plant. We also will be applying for a rebate through the Xcel Energy's Heating Efficiency Program. The city recently applied for rebate for the rec center, um, boiler replacement project and received now nine thousand dollars from that program. And we estimate that this, this is, these boilers are slightly larger and so would probably qualify for somewhat more funding from that program. But that is something that you have to put it, the project in place and then apply for the, the rebate. So we can't count on that money.
Council Carson?
Can I just, can I do one little thing first?
Sure.
So we do not have the full three hundred and fifty thousand from the savings of the, um, outfall relocation. Council's approved about twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seven for the dozer, uh, your October seventeenth meeting. And then if you remember, you authorized staff to move forward with the Foster lift station. So we added that to the CIP for two hundred and fifty. So that leaves seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three of that that can be applied to this. So he, Mark was right, but I want to make sure we didn't over, we overemphasize that the full three hundred and fifty thousand was available.
Right, and I neglected to say that we would also use some fund balance, some of the enterprise fund balance to the tune of approximately eight thousand dollars to, to make up the shortfall that we have with this bid on the table.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't replace those rooftop units at the same time, it'll cause failure in your new units down the line.
Correct, correct.
Well, if there's no more, if there's no comments, I'd, I'd make a motion that, uh, council authorize the award of the wastewater treatment plant heating and ventilation air conditioning repair replacement project to visit the chemical.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had, I had a comment. We're, we're going kind of fast here, but it's good. Uh, you talk about the local, the local bid. So the, this is a local bidder that's going to get this?
No, no, the, the, the local bid, um...
Was nineteen point eight percent higher than the low bid. So it was not within our seven percent that we put, that we do a seven percent preference.
Sure, I understand that.
So the low, the local was nineteen point eight percent higher than the low bid.
So what, what was the actual bid of, of the local bidder? Was that the two seventy-seven?
Uh, yes.
I've got that information.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes. Two hundred and seventy-seven, thousand, three hundred and forty-two.
You mean two seventy-seven? Uh, okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Um, no further discussion. Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have finance, a public hearing and a second reading of ordinance number thirty dash twenty-eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The item before you now is to help align our utility rates with the annual budget for twenty nineteen that has been approved. As a reminder, previously, council has approved five-year projections of what the utility rates would be, what, after we looked at the capital needs and some of the operating needs, we realized that those rates that were previously approved by council would need to be increased next year by just one percent over each one. If you look at how we try to operate the enterprise zone, it's that the revenue that we bring in covers the expenses, and when we did the study, we realized while we might be covering our operational, we were not necessarily covering our capital, and so it was good for us to be able to have that study conducted to better align what our rates need to be. I know it's hard to increase utility rates, it's from a community perspective, not something that is usually very popular. Something that I've, I've talked with individuals about is that if we are going to be covering our costs, we need to remember that in our economy, things do not stay flat. You, you have the cost of living that goes up, you've got the chemicals that can go up, the gas prices can go up, if we have increases to minimum wage, if insurance rates go up, all of those things impact what we have to cover from an operational perspective, as well as just the capital. You need to have an inflation number for your capital when you're planning five or ten years out as well, and so what we've tried to do is keep our increases as flat as possible and in line with what council had previously approved. At your first reading, we had Counselor Vehill request very appropriately, what does this actually look like? You, you're talking a five percent here, a four percent there. What does this actually translate into from a utility bill perspective? And so for this agenda item, we did have finance pull together some different scenarios of what different bills. So you have high users, you got medium users, you got low users, and then we applied the different percentages to the water, sewer, and trash, and so you can see individually what those are, and then on a monthly basis. And so from a residential perspective, you may have someone that uses a little bit more water, may see something like a nine dollar increase, someone that's a lower amount water may see something that's just a two dollar and thirty-three cent increase, and so it does depend on what the water usage is, at least for dictating kind of the difference between that nine point two-two and the two point three-three, because sewers calculate it off what the, the water usage is as well. We also looked at what the industrial and the, the commercial, but you can see when you combine, you don't just add percentages, so if you look at that first example, that consumer's bill's gonna go up nine dollars and twenty-two cents a month, possibly, they stay consistent with their usage, which is an overall six percent. So you don't just add the five to the eight to the ten type of thing from a math perspective, that's not how the, the statistics or the percentages work. You can see the person that has a two point three-three, even though that's less, it's actually an eight percent increase, so you can just, you can see that breakdown there. And with that, Mayor, we can answer any questions or, after you open up the public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you, Heather. At this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address or have any concerns, please come up to the podium. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel.
I just wanna tell Counsel Vehill, thank you for requesting that bill comparison.
Okay, thank you so much, Counsel Carson.
It puts things in better perspective.
Thank you. Counsel Brawls?
I'm still, what's the ordinance again, to raise rates, how much again? The five percent, eight percent?
Yeah, just one second, and I'm putting that up there. So yes, the, for twenty nineteen, the water rates would be a five percent, the sewer rates would be eight percent, and the sanitation rates would be ten percent.
Now, will that hold, will that hold for subsequent years, or we just talk about this year only?
So what you're approving is the next five years, so up to twenty twenty-three. Yes, and that's historically what council has done for over five years, is you've done five years in advance. Normally, we don't have to bring it back to you, but now that we have a much more accurate CIP, we've needed to just do a one percent higher than what you had previously approved.
So we won't change the rate for the next five years?
Unless something else comes up. It is an ordinance, and you could do it, but as it stands, staff would be following what you approved tonight.
Any other question? Okay, Counsel Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanna give a shout out to Heather and Judy for putting together the bill comparison. It's very helpful, so when we go out there to the community and they start asking tough questions, what's gonna, what's gonna happen, we have some, some hard data to share with them. And I also think this is a good idea, well, it's not a good idea ever to raise rates, but I understand why we need to do it, but this might also help folks start to conserve water. That's a whole other conversation to have, I know that, but if one of our goals in the city is to save some water, then I think this might help with that a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Vehill. Counsel Carson?
Um, Mayor, I would move that we, that we, hold on a second.
So just from an option perspective, you can either move to approve on second reading ordinance number thirty dash twenty-eighteen. If you don't, what we can do is bring back the CIP and the budget, and we can discuss what needs to be cut and...
No, I was looking for the language.
Oh, okay, 'cause I just, I wanna make sure you know your options. I don't...
We got a lot of different screens open right here.
I recommend that council hold a public hearing, no, wait, that's not it, I recommend that the, the ordinance number thirty dash twenty-eighteen approved, that we pass the ordinance approving the rate increases for the provision of water, sewer, and solid waste services, ordinance number thirty dash twenty-eighteen, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Think we're missing one.
No, we have all, all votes. If we could just go to the next.
Sorry, okay.
Okay, so we've got, the motion carried six to one with Counselor Grego casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have item B, the approval of the expenditure up to fifty thousand dollars on the finance.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is in front of you. As I move more into the prosecutor role and start getting ready to take that up on January one, and get a greater understanding of how our systems in the police department and the clerk and the prosecutor dovetail or don't with one another, it became pretty clear to me that we could have very large efficiency increases if we were to be able to integrate the electronic ticketing that comes out of the police department with the prosecutor's office and not have to just print off, what we currently do is, electronic ticketing comes into the clerk's office and is shared through the in-code system, but emails get sent to the prosecutor, which get printed off and stapled into manila folders and physically brought into court, and that, that all involves staff time to get that done, and I think can be much more efficiently done because the, the software programs can just talk to each other, and the electronic ticketing populates the prosecutor's database immediately, just, it prosecutes, or populates it differently with different information than it does the court system, but without having a, a human data entry step in between, which, which is completely unnecessary. So that was something that I hadn't realized until I started to dig into how our, our court system works. We handle about seventeen hundred cases in municipal court a year, and I think that the efficiency savings would justify bringing that kind of electronic case management on board. We don't have a price yet, we've, we've talked to one vendor, we have another scheduled meeting with another vendor coming up at the end of the week, but remain confident that it can be done for under fifty thousand dollars. So that's the request, is to authorize us to do a purchase of up to fifty thousand dollars to acquire that. It will require a budget amendment subsequently, and we have identified savings of about four thousand dollars in the city attorney office budget, and I am assuming Holly was informed of this, sixty thousand dollars of savings that we could probably make room for out of the municipal court budget to cover whatever the cost ends up being.
Thank you, Eric. I'll turn it over to counsel for any questions.
Can I just add, one of the reasons we need to move quickly on this is that Eric's gonna, already gonna start getting tickets that are scheduled for January, this isn't something that we can necessarily wait on either, which is why it's being brought to you now instead of waiting the next few months, because the, how things are scheduled into the court, it's that far into advance.
Thank you. Counsel Carson has a question for you.
And I, I'm in favor of moving forward with this right away, but I just had one quick question. Have you guys done even a rough calculation as to what the amount of money you'll save, save on staff time preparing all those manila envelopes is through the course of the year? Because that's probably a pretty significant chunk, and that in itself will probably pay that off really quick.
The way we had set this up, and, and this is, you know, dangerous when Eric and Heather are just sitting around pulling numbers out of the air, but when we were looking at what the staff support was gonna be, and we were, we were looking at moving Jolene to the new position and backfilling that, and we were like, well, you know, half of that maybe can be used for the prosecutor's support if that's what we move towards and those types of things, but we still need the other half for HR, city manager, and everything else support, IT support. So you know, we're just cutting a person in half there and doing all of that. If, if we don't do something like this, that will throw that entire formula out of whack. So we haven't put a number, a dollar figure to it, but I can tell you, we would not be able to use that position as we had planned out. It would be more than a halftime position if we were doing the paper form of support.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, Counsel Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. If there's no other comments, I, I too think this is a very important expenditure, and so I move that we approve an expenditure of up to fifty thousand dollars for upfront costs for prosecutor case management software.
Counsel Carson?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good, thank you. So that is gonna bring us down to item B, under city manager legal. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading and public hearing on a matter that you approved on first, am I on the wrong one? Oh, I'm sorry, we did, I see, I should read my council communication rather than just remembering off the top of my head. We did a work session on this issue recently for addressing smoking lounges, and just briefly, as you may recall from the work session, the Uniform Development Code, when we put it together, made a very nice definition of a smoking lounge, and then didn't do anything with that definition, and on our minds when we were dealing with that was our prior experience with the Hookah Lounge, which had come in, and when they started that, they, they really had to kinda work through various little square pegs in round holes to fit within our ordinance concerning smoking bans in public places, so they made themselves a private club place, and it was just kind of a klugey workaround. It seems much cleaner if we're going to allow for smoking lounges as we had thought when we were thinking about the Uniform Development Code, to just straight up do so, and that's what this ordinance does, and then it also adjusts inconsistencies that we have in our clean indoor air ordinance that arose because we enacted our clean indoor air ordinance before the state of Colorado enacted its Clean Indoor Air Act, and some of the stuff that our ordinance allows for the Colorado Act does not, in particular, smoking in taverns. And so this cleans that up and aligns our ordinance with the Clean Air Act, also takes advantage of a feature of the Clean Air Act, which is that you can prohibit smoking in, around the doorways to public places in any radius around those doorways that you want. The default provision of the clean indoor air, so the state Clean Indoor Air Act is fifteen feet. This ordinance proposes twenty-five feet, which is what we have posted on our sign outside of City Hall, but that, that makes it a citywide twenty-five-foot radius around public buildings also, that, public building doorways that you cannot smoke.
Thank you, Eric. I'll turn it over to counsel for questions and comments. Counsel Brawls?
Well, right now, can they smoke in taverns, is that what you're saying?
They can under our ordinance, but they can't under state law, and state law trumps our ordinance, so it's really just cleaning it up.
Okay. Counsel Carson?
Um, this is more of a housekeeping item, I think, and if there isn't any comments, I move that we pass this on first reading ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-eighteen to clarify provisions related to smoking in public buildings to comply with Colorado's Clean Door, Clean Indoor Air Act and make provisions for smoking lounges.
Okay, we have a motion? Yeah, set it.
I'm, okay, set it.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and second, and I'll just add to that, that what we'll do is set this for a public hearing on December fifth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item that we have is the item C. You, Heather? Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, normally, I don't necessarily have to bring these before you because we're kinda trying, we find out what the deadline is, and we're rushing to meet it, and it being included, a project being included in the budget or the CIP is usually sufficient, but since we have a little more lead time, I thought, let's go ahead and get counsel to actually vote on authorizing us to apply for the grant. December first is the next deadline for a DOLA grant, which then set us up for those projects that have been approved for twenty nineteen. We, I looked at the CIP and, and what DOLA usually favors and, and what would be most appropriate, and I also contacted Kristi Doon to talk about some of those projects, and she felt probably what would be the most competitive would be the Washington Street addition, the design of those streets, the drainage, that type of thing. In the CIP, we currently have two hundred and fifty thousand in there. Mark is working on getting a engineered number, it could come down a little bit, but we, we need to get a final number because I wanna make sure we're only applying for forty percent, and usually, once it's awarded, that percentage is locked in, so I don't wanna go in with two hundred and fifty and the bids come in at two hundred, because then we get less of a grant than we would have otherwise. So my recommendation is you authorize us to apply for the December first deadline for the Washington Addition Streets with whatever that final number is, a forty percent request match, or a forty percent request for the grant.
Counsel Grego?
I just wanna thank staff and this council, it's taken thirty-five years to do this, and prior to that, they fought for that too, so it's been taking a while. So now that we have something in black and white, it's something that, that we can look at, that it's gonna move forward, it's set in there, so next year, if I, this year, if I decide not to run again, it'll be in there, so I wouldn't, like I say, once again, thank you very much, it's been a long while, and I'm sure the people in that area will really appreciate this.
You're welcome, Counsel Grego. You're welcome. Okay?
With that, I guess, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Might as well.
Go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and, and authorize staff to apply for the Energy Mineral Impact Assistant Fund Grant. for the Energy Mineral Impact Assistant Fund Grant for the design of Washington Edition Streets.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from any of the council members? Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We had Tree Board today. There are two, at least two grants that Andy and members of the Tree Board will be working on. In addition, the Tree Board, some of the members of the community have noticed some scale on some trees, and so we're working with potential property owners to see if they can fix some of that scale and take care of that. We're worried about, it's actually like a bug. And so, I think the, the Tree Board is doing a lot of really interesting things, and we also talked about them assisting with organization to help the golf board look at some of the trees along the paths to start. So, I'm very excited about what the Tree Board is doing. They're very, very active, and so that meeting was held today.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Any other council committee reports? Okay. We'll go to staff announcements.
Okay. Jess, I think you had a quick one, and so as Jess is coming up, I'll fill the time. I did receive an email from Ray, who has indicated that the train has removed the cars and the intersections are back open, so that was great news to receive, and I know the public that commutes in the morning will be definitely appreciating that. I do have some more, but I'll let Jess do her little update real fast.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Filling in for Andy tonight. Halloween was a very eventful day for us last week. We had two big events. So, the snowfall the night before Halloween kinda dampened the police department's Fright Fest plans, so we were able to host them in the recreation center. I don't have a final head count, I don't know if the chief does, but we had tons of people there, I think every parking space in the lot, the new lot, down the street, filled. So, great event, well-attended. The second event, and we kinda timed it to work with the Fright Fest whether, or wherever it was held, was the opening of the, the Ice Rink. So, we opened Halloween night from six to nine. About a hundred people attended, so good turnout, and, you know, thus far, so far, so good. I mean, of course, there's always some unexpected hiccups with, with opening a facility for the season, but very well-attended. I mean, every day we go over there, especially after school, there are folks just cruising around, having a great time, so.
Did you wanna talk about the Starburst, or did you want me to offer that reminder?
Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
So, on November seventeenth, at the Ice Rink, I think Andy's already sent an invitation to all of you. Around one o'clock is the start of the SLV YHA hockey game. During the first intermission, the Colorado Lottery will be down to present us with the Starburst Award that we won for Ice Rink, so. And then we will have an opportunity to watch the rest of the hockey game, and between the first and the second hockey game, we invite you and the public to get out on the ice, with or without a skating aid, so we'll have a little fun there, too.
And I'm not sure we've shared with council that if they visit the Ice Rink multi-use pavilion, that you may see a familiar face and that Hines is working with us seasonally, so, you know, we're bringing family back to, to help with this facility.
Hines always wanted to run the Zamboni, and now his dream has come true. He's, he's doing a great job, yeah.
Is there any questions for Jess before she sits down?
Just real one, one quick comment. Jess, I was able to participate at the Halloween Fright Fest. Thank you all for making that adjustment and making it to where families could come in there and stay warm and enjoy themselves. And also, one comment I received from a family from La Habra when I went to the multipurpose center Ice Rink to ice skate Charlie. This one family said they were so appreciative of how staff and council has made it affordable, that lady was able to bring her family to ice skate that night cheaper than it would've cost her to take them to the movies. So, thank you for making it reasonable and affordable for families, not only in Alamosa, but throughout the San Luis Valley. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Jess.
Thank you.
We do have a little bit more from a, a staff update. The first one is, I think everyone's aware, yesterday was a big day at the polls and the elections, and certain things were decided, including we will be losing our own Amy McKinley. She was successful in her bid to serve as the county treasurer. She has submitted her letter of resignation. She will be sworn in January second. She's gonna be doing some cross-training, then we're hitting the holidays, and so her last day, it looks like December twenty-eighth will be her last day. Considering the last time when we lost our HR director to bigger things in Plublo, we are much better staffed this time around. We have a lot more cross-training that's occurred and, and those types of things. I had talked to Jolene when Amy announced that she was gonna be running and looking at the timelines. Jolene had previously indicated interest in the HR position. At that point, I felt she needed a little more experience under her belt and some things like that, but as you know, in the last few years, Jolene has just really shined and meets the minimum requirements as well for the position. So, we are advertising that internally for five days, and, and Jolene will be interested. I'm not sure if we'll have other internal candidates. Should Jolene be the one to receive that, then we will quickly move to advertising for her position, and hopefully, we can prevent too much of a workload or things having to be put on the back burner or those types of things. So, we're very, very excited for Amy. We're going to miss her. She's had a very positive impact on the organization, and I know from an employee perspective, they always felt like they could go to her with questions and felt very comfortable with her, and it's one of the key parts to being an HR manager, and so we're, we're definitely going to miss Amy. But that's kinda the plan that we have for replacing that. The next item I wanted to share with you is almost every municipality I know of was very, very excited when the Supreme Court came out with their decision on the sales tax and the Wayfair, and that decision that would allow the collection of sales tax on internet sales. It's very much seen from a municipal perspective as leveling the playing field, especially for small local businesses, Main Street, brick, brick and mortar, those types of things, and it's something that we very much have wanted for a very long time. That said, I think a lot of us were thinking Amazon and these large companies were the ones that are gonna be impacted, and it wasn't until I received a call from a local business owner that it's, it's even small local business owners. So, if anyone ships over the internet to another location, this actually is impacting them. And now, that local business owner is very much in support. They very much understand philosophically this is a very, very good thing. The thing they were struggling with is that the state has set a December deadline for any of the entities the state collects for, so non-statutory cities or home rule cities, any of those entities that the state collects for, they're having to meet a very, very fast timeline to be compliant with some of the stuff that's going on with the Department of Revenue. So, the business owner had reached out to me just to find out what, how we were gonna handle it. What I shared with that individual is for home rule communities, we were following the lead of the Colorado Municipal League, which advised us to be cautious, we need to be deliberate, we don't wanna overwhelm our vendors, and we wanna make sure we do this in the, the most responsible manner possible while still making sure we're leveling the playing field. And so, he very much appreciated that, but I just wanted council to be aware, it's nothing we need to do, it's nothing we need to weigh in on, but sometimes these things can happen at the federal level, and we don't realize that some of the impacts that can happen at the local level. They are working with their representatives, they are communicating with the Department of Revenue, as is the Colorado Municipal League, but at this point, you know, we haven't rushed into anything, and we will be very deliberate, and we're hopeful that maybe the state will see how tight of a turnaround this is for some of the smaller companies, especially as they're preparing for the Christmas season and all of that type of thing, and their point of sale may not be as sophisticated as something like Amazon. So, we're hopeful that there might be some time added at the state level, but it's nothing we have control over, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure you're aware of what's going on in our community and what some of our local businesses are, are working on. The last thing I wanted to share with you is just a reminder, we do not meet again until December as far as a council meeting, so I hope you, I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. We do have a few other events, though, that will be coming up. Next week, November fourteenth, at six PM, we have the joint meeting with Alamosa Board of Education. Jess just reminded you of the presentation of the Starburst Award. Staff is also doing additional outreach to the Montana Azul Park neighborhood. If you remember, when we first started this project, Andy and his crew did a great job of reaching out to have them help design the park, what they wanted to see, and at that time, we thought we could get it done in twenty eighteen, but once we looked at the stormwater and some of that, those needs, we realized we can't do it until twenty nineteen. So, we're just gonna go back out to the neighborhood, hold a meeting, we're gonna show them what the final designs are, we're gonna talk timelines, what they can expect, those types of things. You're more than welcome to attend if you want, but it's not something you're by any means play a role or have to be there or anything like that. It's just to make sure we keep the neighborhood up to date on the project. And then lastly, before our next council meeting, we have the Celebration of Lights, which is November thirtieth, and so some fun activities coming up.
Thank you, Heather.
Heather? Oh, 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 sorry. Can I keep talking for one? We have next week our outreach for the Downtown Plan, Tuesday, November thirteenth, at five thirty at The Roast. It's an open house. And then Wednesday, the fourteenth, at five thirty at the Rec Center is the Design Charette.
Heather, what day and time was the Montana Azul?
Um, that will be November twenty-sixth at six PM, and we're gonna hold it at the Tierra Nueva Apartment Complex, Community Room, and that's six hundred Craft Drive.
Okay. Council Hensley?
Um, so on the Downtown Plan, is that something that would be good for us to go to?
You are always more than welcome. I'll give you a fill of some of the ideas that are being discussed and, and all of those, but it's by no means a requirement.
So, chances are, then, because we're having our meeting with...
Correct. The November fourteenth, we will not be attending that one.
Right. Okay, just, I was just sort of seeing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have liquor licensing authority actions. Is that for you, Holly?
No, you just have one item on consent, so.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
We have one item on consent. Calendar B. Council? Or is it Eric?
Well, no, it's, it's consent, so it's only me if you want to talk about it. Someone could pull it off of consent, but it's scheduled to be, it's just on Consent Calendar B, so.
Council, wanna, Council Daniel?
Um, Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Not, please start voting. Okay. Think I'm missing one. Okay, got it. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried six to one with Council Broyles casting the no vote.
Okay. And finally, we have council comments. Any council comments? Council Grego? And Council Daniel?
This year, the Veterans Day falls on a Sunday, and we will be having our Veterans Day Parade on Saturday. So, anybody, I invite council to go up and sit on our review and stand like they do every year, and we invite anybody that wants to participate in the parade by just showing up over at, what is that, Hunt? Is it Hunt or Denver? I think it's Hunt. Anyway, it's over there, over there by Nino's. That's where we're gonna be lining up, and they'll be lining up from about ten, nine-thirty to ten.
Okay.
Parade will, won't start till about ten forty-five.
It's Denver.
Denver?
Yeah.
It's Denver, okay.
Thank you.
I invite you all to come down. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Grego. Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council Grego. Veterans Day is very special to me. I will not be here. I will be doing a run out of state, but I will be thinking about you all. I wanted to let people know that the Caring for Colorado Foundation is really working to ensure that they're still funding a lot of things going on in the San Luis Valley and that they're very committed to us as a valley, and they're actually doing three site visits tomorrow with different, different potential grantees for this next cycle, and so they'll be down, and I get to go on some of the site visits with them, so I'm very excited about that. I also attended a broadband presentation in Fort Morgan a couple of weeks ago through ALO, and Fort Morgan is one of those communities who has made broadband a utility in their community, which I know is not where, where we're heading, but it was just really fascinating, and so I do have some information to share with Jim that I got from them, and I think they've done some really neat things with their digging policies and their street policies. And so, Mark, you may be interested in this as well, because I, I really feel like while we are not making it ours, and, and that's not our goal, that we should really look at what other communities have done in order to be successful with that. So, I just feel like I've had a couple of really neat things happen lately and wanted to share them.
Thank you, Council Daniel. Council V. Hill, and then Council Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, just a few comments. I'd like to give kudos to the parts and tech staff. I was also there that night for the Halloween trick-or-treating, and Andy showed me quickly the Ice Rink multipurpose facility, and it was top to bottom sticking stuff. There was no dust anywhere, it was clean. All the improvements that we got going on there are just phenomenal, so I'm really looking forward to that, to that, I'm looking forward to that for this season. Also, wanna give a, a congratulations to Alamosa Volleyball. They're in the state tournament, they play tomorrow. Sandri de Cristo Volleyball is in the state tournament, and the Baltimore Tigers are also in the state tournament. They're all playing tomorrow here in Denver. And then, just so everybody knows, the reason why I'm in Denver is my wife is getting close to having a child and be in Denver, so I appreciate you all, and thank you to Holly and Ms. Christina Daniel for helping me with the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Hensley?
I was just gonna go back to Veterans Day and add that at seven PM, there's the Big Band Concert also that honors the veterans, and they do a fantastic job, and so it will be at Adam State. Would you, if you don't mind, Eric, is it at Richardson Hall?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to make sure of that. And so, it is a really exciting event. They do a fantastic job, and so I highly recommend that also as an event for people to go to.
Okay, thank you.
Seven PM on the Saturday, so it is on the Saturday as well, and at seven PM.
Okay.
Did I get that all right, Eric?
That's all right.
And part of what it is, I have students that actually help support this and try to get Adam State students to go to this, and so every year, we do that and we work with them, and it's just really exciting, and I know, I know our students really appreciate it as well, so.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I would like to just congratulate the Alamosa High School volleyball girls team, as well as thank the police department for the Fright Fest. They did a wonderful job in, in collecting candy to give out to all, and also tomorrow, there will be a law enforcement appreciation dinner at the, I believe, the, what's the name of that center? Got the name of it?
The National Guard.
National Guard. Yep, thank you. All right. That's all we have. No further comments. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.